All right, welcome to the audience to the Board of Selectments meeting for Monday, January 24th. We will start with the pledges and allegiance. Hi, everybody, pledges.
To the five United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, since we don't have any payroll that manifests, we're going to skip over that. So, uh, plural of minutes, did anybody get to read the minutes from 1:10? Do we have?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of January 10, 2022.
Second.
We got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Oh, all in favor? Aye, unanimous. Uh, we will go to the board of the assigned boards and committees. Um, we have a meeting with the planning board coming up this Wednesday for some site plan reviews and we'll have a split, but things are going pretty well there. Uh, Tyler, how'd the last budget go?
It was long.
Yeah, I bet.
They were done, so.
Okay, good. That's good. Uh, we're going to the CIP. Uh, 300th is, we'll meet them next week, right? Or?
Well, they were, I think they-
They're supposed to happen tonight, but they were ready.
I don't know that that was ever confirmed across everybody. I-
Probably sent me an email or whatever.
Oh, okay.
I got a call said they wanted to come in and, um, you know, get the information they needed. Somebody, I don't know, somebody was out of the office or-
All right.
That's, I don't know.
Do you want to invite them to come next time?
Yeah, we need to have, we need to get that meeting done, just so we can finalize their numbers for the rest of this, um, upcoming events and stuff.
Okay, so I will invite them for the 7th.
They did have, I mean, it was a good turnout at the on fire.
Yeah, it was wonderful. It was a great event. Uh, anything going on with Marston's?
Nope, not since the exciting news of getting the backstops up.
Perfect. We'd like to welcome back Chris, uh, and to go into our town administrators' report.
I, you know, I don't have that much for you, uh, um, that you aren't going to hear about later. Um, one thing, uh, since, as I'm getting back up to speed, one thing that happened this month that I wrote to you about, uh, the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, the final rule came out on that. We'd been operating under this interim rule and the, the rule changed dramatically, uh, in our favor. Uh, we, you know, have a lot more flexibility about how you can use that money. Um, we had been in that weird situation where we didn't have lost revenue by their calculations. A lot of cities and towns did. We just, we didn't because of, uh, just local circumstance. Uh, now there's this humongous exemption for that, so we can, we can sneak in under that, uh, under that exemption and, and claim virtually all of the ARPA money as, um, uh, making up for lost revenue. So, by doing that, it puts it into the bucket of you can kind of spend it on whatever you spend money on already.
Good.
And that's very much in layman's terms, but that is the position that most cities and towns had been in last year under that, under that old version of the rule. And now, um, we are, we're just like everybody else. We, we now have this 400 something thousand left, uh, that is really at your disposal for, uh, lots of different things.
We have still the same amount of time wise to spend that money.
Yeah, yeah, we got through 2024, I think it is. Um, and we, uh, we, I had, I had suggested that you, um, kind of earmarked that for, um, culvert work because that was a, um, a very clear eligible use that is going to have a tax impact. That we still need to deal with that. That's a, a very real, very large cost. Um, but, um, you've got a lot more flexibility now than, than you did. So, that's probably the biggest news of the month.
So, at what point would we want to start making decisions around that? Like if we said, okay, we do want to use it for culvert work, at which point, Sean, we need to know that that's where, however-
Uh, well, if... While I was gone, you, you changed the approach on culverts and roads. I wasn't privy to that conversation, but there was a warrant article that we had proposed that said, uh, start saving money to work on culverts. Um, that didn't make it to the warrant. The thinking when we proposed that was that warrant article and ARPA was gonna, was gonna lay out our, our culvert plan. Um, so I think we kind of need to go back to square one, maybe when the CIP is done and say, okay, here's the, here's the product list. How do you want to start applying that?
It was my understanding that that was a future ask, not a, we wanted to put a warrant this year on it.
Uh, it was in the draft warrant that-
Okay.
-I left behind, but, um, no, I don't, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I wasn't part of the conversation, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, and my understanding with Sean wasn't part of any conversation about it either, so, um, whatever. We're, we'll know, you'll know, when you have a budget after March, um, you, you may have decisions to make in the short term that ARPA may play a role in, uh, and you'll have a, a CIP snapshot you can look at at the same time. That's probably the time to start thinking about how to use the ARPA money. Uh, so anyway, I don't think I have anything else, um, in, under that heading. I think Dale told me today, our prod, our, our work's in progress, our projects are all on track and nothing to report there that he's been watching for us, so.
He's got it right now.
Yep. Um, so I don't think I have anything else for you.
Perfect. Uh, one of the last, uh, it's not an action item, but, uh, brief discussion on the mask mandate that we still have in effect. We're going to talk about it every meeting, and here we are. Um, I move we keep it in place until the beginning of the month of February 1st.
So, review it our next meeting again?
Right, or, I mean-
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I, I think we're getting close, but-
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I personally, if we, we start in February without it, it wouldn't matter to me, but I think the numbers going the right way, I think it's the time that we can bring that back, but.
Uh, just for, just for clarity sake, I think you, uh, you, wherever you want to go, of course you go, but, um, just for clarity of communication with the voters, you might think about doing whatever you're doing through the deliberative session and then, and then changing, because you're going to be in a mask situation in that deliberative session. So, I guess before you set a hard date-
Yeah.
Think about how you're going to get that.
We'll just post, we'll just say we were keeping it until effect to the next meeting, uh, till we join in another conversation.
Yeah.
Tyler, you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So stays in effect until our next, uh, Board of Selectments meeting, which is going to be on the 7th. Um... Anything else under the, I don't have anything else that I recall for action items? Am I missing something? I don't think I am. No, that's good.
I think I will have actionable information for you on tax deed waivers at your next meeting.
Okay, that'll be good. Tyler was one of the things that we did.
Hey, um, just going back to, um, 300th committee, if we're going to try and have them come in the next meeting, I think I'd like to try and meet with Steve and go through the budget like we did, um, before, because I have that spreadsheet.
Yep.
So I think it would be, I think I'll try and meet with him before the next meeting, because then we won't have to spend a lot of time-
Going through-
...figuring out what the numbers are. We'll have it.
That would be great.
Yeah, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, you want me to just have, I'll have him reach out to you?
Yes, please, yeah. And I, I can just meet him up here someday.
Okay.
Um, moving on, we will go to the assessing part of the meeting. We have three veterans' tax credits. Did everybody get a chance to go over those and read them?
Yep.
Would somebody like to make a motion on those, or is there any discussion on them? No?
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the veteran tax credit requests for map 16 lot 6-1, map 58, uh, lot 7, map 8 lot 9-23.
Second. We got a motion in the second. Any more discussion? No? All in favor? Those pass, all three, for nothing. Back to you, Chris, on deliberative session and election planning. I know we're going to have Bonnie hopefully at 7:30?
Yeah, uh, I would expect her by 7:30. I expect conservation by 7:00.
Okay.
Uh, maybe we jump to C?
You want to go to the slide, okay, perfect.
Uh, just to fill the time? Does that work for you?
That works. I have some comments on that anyways.
Okay, uh, so we don't need a decision from you on this tonight. This is something that, um, that Sean's been working on, uh, two, two things really generally. Um, one is, um, the fees that are charged for, uh, non, stuff that doesn't go in the, in the compactor, the, uh, electronics, uh, furniture, C and D demo, mattresses, that kind of stuff. Um, we, that's where we're seeing a lot of the price increases. Our, our methodology there has always been to try and, um, at least my understanding of our methodology is always try to just pass the cost on to the user directly, more or less, uh, and without making it too complicated. Um, you know, you can only, you only want to have so many different prices for so many different things, but, um, with the price increases, uh, that we're seeing, uh, Sean has suggested some changes in those that you have, as well as a much more detailed breakdown on tires. We've, we've come to understand the dramatic difference in what we're being charged for different kinds of tires, and our prices have never reflected that. Um, the vast majority of our tire traffic is just, you know, passenger car tires, not a big deal, but the specialty stuff turns out to actually cost quite a bit to dispose of. So he's asked to be able to reflect that in the fees.
One thing about that-
Yep.
-is that I do not think we should have things at $2.75. $2.75, I think everything's-
Oh, just round it to the dollar, yeah.
Round it to three bucks.
Yep, yep.
That way they, they don't need to be dealing with change and quarters and-
Yeah, yeah, up or down, we can get that down to a whole amount.
Make them all even numbers for people, that way it's-
That's fair.
Uh, yeah, we can make that change.
And then you can actually take some of these to make it simpler, you know, I mean, put like the motorcycle lawnmower, passengers light, just-
Lump them all together.
You know, that could even be $5 or whatever, just a-
Yep, okay.
You know, because people aren't going to be carrying, you know, ones or threes, everybody does have it, you know, $5 or $10 or 20, 15, 20, that's less money that we have to have at the dump, at the disposal.
Yep.
For ready cash, we can just have, bring us all bigger, just numbers.
Yep, makes sense, operationally makes sense, uh, user friendly, all of it. So as long as you're, you know, you're comfortable with the theory of, of that, then we'll, we can fine tune that.
I'll need all up then, these, this list.
Yeah, just so they're even numbers, so that we're not dealing with quarters-
Yeah.
-and change and then not having that and-
Yeah, and even if, if we can peg them to the $5 increment, that's probably even better, but-
Yeah, that's where I would go with it.
Yeah.
It's not that much of a difference and it's-
Yep.
So do we need a proposal for the ones on the front?
Uh, I don't need you to bless them tonight. If you want to, you know, we, we don't want to just rush in here and say, can we raise the prices on everything? I, I just wanted to put it in front of you, get your sense of, if you're comfortable with it generally, and then maybe next meeting you can, you can make a decision when you're, you're all here. Um, that's fine.
I'm comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable with it.
And then second, uh, to that is the, um, is the question, and this one's a little more complex. You may want to talk with Sean about it directly, but the, um, the, for a long time, we have had a requirement that, uh, for, uh, things going in the, in the compactor are going in clear garbage bags. Uh, our understanding of the history is that, is that you want to see what goes in there. You want to, you want to discourage the disposal of recyclable materials. You want to, you know, try and catch things that could be recycled, uh, from just being thrown away and paid to get rid of, um, as well as the potential for potentially hazardous things, you know. We don't see a lot of that. We did have a fire in the compactor a few months ago, but that, that's probably rare, but it is, um, it is a thing. Um, the, the trade off and the reality being, um, we don't actually have enough people there to really police what's in those bags. We're not standing there watching the clear bags go in and, uh, our people, we just don't have enough people to stand there and, and negotiate with, with residents about what's in their clear bags and, and look over their shoulder in that way, so, um, we've recently had a couple, uh, complaints from residents. They're hard, the bags are hard to find, or they can't find good quality bags, or they're, um, it's, it's inconvenient. So we, we, we kicked it around. We said, well, if it's something you want us to think about doing away with that requirement, those are the upsides and the downsides. Um, it's a, it would probably be a, a, an improved convenience for the user. If they didn't have to, you know, track down a special bag, we're probably not getting a great benefit out of it. There is a, there is a benefit, but are we really capturing that benefit? I, we don't think so. Um, so that's not a hard and firm recommendation from, from Public Works or from me, but it is a, what do you think? Um, is it worth it? Are we, you know, are we-
Well, I said we keep it the way it is with the clear bags. If one dark one goes in or one solid white one goes in, so be it.
We, yeah, we, that's kind of the way things are now-
Right, so.
But, um, we really would like to get to the point where we can give our, our operating staff clear guidance on, this is, these are the rules, and we're, we're trying to enforce the rules, and if, if we needed to make a rule, we'll make a rule. If we don't need to make a rule, we won't make a rule, so.
What's the, what's the split? What's the percentage of clear versus colored right now?
I think the vast majority of people are using colored, but I, I mean, using clear, uh, because that's the rule and that's what, you know, the expectation has been. Um, but we're not patrolling it. We're not, they're just, we can't count it, we don't-
I think more of the focus should be on the, the items that we are going to charge for, where they should be focusing their time on.
Yeah.
That's where the, the goal should be.
Okay.
You know, and not to add any more to what they're already doing, you know, by making them police the bags and stuff like that, you know. People should have the respect to do the right thing and have the clear bags and recycle if they want to continue using the way the dump operates, because if it does get abused and it doesn't start working out, then there might be a whole change of what goes on. We don't want to see that, but again, you know, when people start abusing the system, changes need to be made. But if it's not something where it's, in my opinion, if it's not something that's extremely detrimental at this point, then let's keep the status quo of where it is and just keep it going. Chris, I think, Tyler, you have an opinion on that?
So like you're doing, like I said, I reading a note the other, maybe it caused the fire last year, but I hope they're not throwing batteries away and trash bags. I mean, that, that's not good. But I know it's hard. I mean, they're doing something, you just turn your, turn your head for a minute and in goes the bag, so.
Yep.
But-
Okay. All right, we will, uh, we'll let that one lie. Uh, and we'll come back to you next meeting with a tightened up, uh, tire list and-
Okay.
Go from there. Okay. The, well, before conservation gets here, I can just give you the sneak preview on the warrant prep. I don't know with, without a full body here, how much of this you're going to want to tackle tonight, but, um, the, this is your last scheduled meeting before the deliberative session. Uh, we would typically use this time to say who's going to present what warrant articles and, uh, and what else do you want to prep in that regard? Uh, and also, uh, what, you know, are there amendments that the board wants to propose to articles? Um, you have a, you have a draft of the warrant, uh, that is, to the best of my knowledge, this is the draft that went to the Budget Committee. Um, I am concerned that we have received some feedback from DRA as part of this process. Every year we, we give DRA the warrant before it goes to press, so we, we all know what's going to be enforced and voted on. I'm not certain that their feedback has been incorporated in this. There, there's some, most of it's minor, but, and I haven't had time to dig into it, but I don't think this is ready for you to sign and post yet. Um, I, one, one thing that jumped right out at me is that there were recommendations made to warrant articles that didn't have appropriations. Um, that's not allowed by law, so I knew they were, it just, this doesn't feel like it was, it was 100% ready. And then, um, there, there's some question on, uh, just some textual things like that, so, um, we're, we're going to nail that down. I'm, I'm, I wasn't here to know who was doing which part of the process, so, um, I just, I want to get 100% on that before I ask you to sign this warrant and post it. Um, you have another week before your legal deadline to do that, so.
Another week, so we could have, we had to, we could have a meeting on Monday.
Yeah, you could, you could actually, if you were comfortable with it and didn't need to discuss it, you could sign it without having a meeting, that's okay. But if you, also, if you want to have a meeting, you could do that on Monday, a week from tonight, and still meet your deadline.
We still need to sit together and decide who's reading what.
Exactly.
If, if you want to do that with the five of you, then, yeah.
Right, get more on to that.
Right, so, uh, that's why I, uh, you don't have to do that, but if you want all five be in on that conversation about who's presenting what at the deliberative session.
I think we should.
Yeah.
That's an option.
Doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be a long meeting.
No.
Yeah.
Probably going to take us an hour to do the whole thing, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, if you want to proceed that way, I will have a, a warrant ready for you. Yep?
So, I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't mean to cut you off like that.
That's okay.
But as you said, you were just talking with the lawyer, and I read some of the things that they, they sent on, like one of the warrant articles that was due with the school, was due to have the school contracts.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and stuff like that, that's not presently legal to do. Do we keep that warrant article on there? We have to keep it on there because it's a citizen petition.
Yep.
But if it passes, doesn't mean anything, does it? Or, I mean, does that-
Correct. Uh, so yes, you have to put it on the warrant. It came in, it was, it was duly petitioned and, uh, what you now have, in that case, now you've, now you've talked about it, we can talk about it publicly. You, you have opinions from your attorney about the, uh, say the validity and the impact of each of these petition warrants.
I don't want to go through them all, but I'm just saying, I'm just trying to get a general idea when I was reading that, what that does.
Yep. Uh, so what you, what would, what, it's going to go on the warrant?
Yeah.
Uh, how the board wishes to talk to the voters about that is up to you. You can go into the deliberative session and say, yeah, this is here because it was petitioned, but our, our opinion and our, our attorney's opinion is that it isn't valid, and if you do pass it, we're not going to implement it.
Okay.
Uh, what you've done historically with some of these, if not all of them, is release that opinion to the voters as a, as a way of showing them that you've, you know, where your opinion is coming from.
During the deliberation.
Uh, you, you've done that before the deliberative session in some cases.
We did the voter's guide last year.
We did it, right. We did a voter guide last year that included some of those things, so, um, you could, you could, if you chose to, this is your communication with your attorney, so you don't have to do this, but if you chose to, you could release that to, to the voters to say, this is what we learned about this warrant article. And that, that validity question comes up again and again with these petition warrant articles. You'll, you know, we don't, you have to talk about it publicly before I can, but-
Yeah.
Um, the, the, the question of is this even valid is going to keep coming up with these petition warrant, so, um, perhaps next week in your, in your discussion, you, you could decide if you want to release those opinions, um, as well.
Well, I think we'll, we'll put that onto for the discussion of Monday. Hopefully we'll have the full five member board, and then get more of those fine details and just clarify it that night.
Yeah.
And if there, it, once you, I know you just got these at like 3:30 this afternoon. Uh, if you have questions beyond what is answered here, we, we have time to get follow up.
Okay.
Is there, there is some nuance to some of these, so go ahead and dive in and, and we can do follow ups. Uh, and, and, uh, your attorney can clarify things and revise these letters if you need it, if you need something-
Okay.
-clearer, so.
There's a, there's a couple typos in here, too.
Yes, that, uh, and I, I will have, uh, I will have something to you before the end of the week, so you can help me look for typos as well as legal questions like that. And I think, uh, uh, you're, you're probably going to see that the, the one in particular, um, is Article 5, that the fire chief had written to you all and asked to come in tonight and talk about that, so I think he's, I think he's coming to do that tonight.
Okay.
Whether you finalize anything with him about that, I don't know, but-
Yeah.
This, this subject isn't dead for tonight, uh, but you do have, uh, what appears to be the entire Conservation Commission, uh, coming to join you for the public hearing and stuff.
That's great.
Oh, they're on time.
As always.
So Sam, anytime you're ready to come up. We are, we're going to just wait on you, so when you're ready, we're ready.
Okay, thank you. Should we shift before we go?
I mean, who's, how many people are speaking?
Well, we, Jeremy's going to be speaking.
Sure, I can clear out too.
Okay. Sure, come on. Sorry, Sam, give you a little room here.
I'm not as big as I used to be.
I can't say that for myself, but that's something else.
Cheryl, do you need more seats?
Um, yeah, I can go in if you want. Mary, do you want to-
Everything's back.
Is it your preference to have Jeremy speak into that one, or?
If he wants to, yes, that'd be fine.
I'll read that afterwards if that's all right.
Is it a hard time?
Yeah, they give us one.
I'm just going to wait a minute right now for everybody to get settled in the room before we call this together, so just-
And I think Sam calls it, right?
Uh, sure, right. One of us will probably want to do it.
No, that's what it's supposed to be like, that you-
Well, it says joint public, but-
Well, it's run by, this part, this part, the public one is run by subdivision commission, and then he pulls that and then he goes, and it's all.
As soon as possible to be ready. I'll turn this over to you, Sam.
Okay. My name is Sam Demerid, I chair the Nottingham Conservation Commission. I'm opening up a public hearing pursuant to RSA 36-A colon Five regarding the expenditure of up to $130,000 from the Conservation Fund for a project, uh, that we have, uh, labeled as Peach Twenty, which, uh, is the property belonging to Steve and Rhoda Capron on, at, uh, on, uh, at 311 Stage Road here in Nottingham. The Caprons wish to have, uh, before they move out of town, have a conservation easement on this property so that it can be continued to use as, as farmland. And hopefully that the new owners will, will be able to do a little more farming than, than Steve and, than, and Rhoda were able to do. Life got, kinda gotten away, I guess, of them doing essentially what they wanted to do, but they have kept the, the field open, they've, they've had it mowed, uh, at least yearly, possibly twice yearly, uh, for hay, and they have had a small garden up there. Okay, uh, I also, let me, let me just introduce the members of the Conservation Commission that are here. Way over there is Deb Kimble, who is the vice chair, Susan Mooney, who is the secretary, Cheryl Smith, who is on the Conservation Commission, and when, back there, we have Raylene Shippe Rice, who is an alternate to the Conservation Commission, but to be sitting in for Kristen Lamb at this point. So we, we do have a quorum. We have seven members and we have four regular members plus an alternate here at this point. Probably would like to have Jeremy Lugi, who from Southeast Land Trust, who was prepared the appraisal, or had the appraisal report prepared for the Capron property, uh, give us everything that we've tried to do.
Sure. Well, thank you all for having me, and, um. Sure. Oh, okay, are we on TV? Great. Well, thank you for having me. Um, Selt's been working on this project for the better part of a year with Steve and Rhoda, and we're really excited about protecting this particular property on Stage Road. As Sam mentioned, uh, there's really incredible agricultural resources on site, prime ag soils and statewide important agricultural soils. The property is also very close by to the Mulligan Forest and over 3,000 acres of already conserved land. Now, that's important from a wildlife perspective and protecting the corridors that wildlife use. The, the three top tiers of the Wildlife Action Plan done by New Hampshire Fish and Game are found on the Capron property, uh, as our important habitat for, uh, certain endangered reptiles. Last but not least, uh, the water that flows from the property goes down to the North River and on to the Lamprey River, which, as most of you probably know, is used by the University of New Hampshire and the town of Durham for a drinking water supply. So, uh, at Selt, we're really excited to bring this project forward. We've been working with the Conservation Commission since last summer to understand the value of a conservation easement. We got the appraisal back and the easement value, uh, was put at a hun- uh, $204,000, and Steve and Rhoda have agreed to sell that conservation easement for $75,000. So, that's about $125,000, $129,000 reduction in its value because they feel that it's really important to both see the land protected and something that we're all gonna strive for, uh, is to try to, uh, provide an opportunity for some farmers, uh, to purchase the land. Uh, that, that's not a guarantee, as probably anyone who's sold the house before knows, you, you can't always, uh, determine who's gonna buy it, but they've been working with Selt and, and we've been trying to bring some, uh, local farmers forward who are interested in purchasing the land, so.
And Jeremy, so you've had, I mean, they've, they've met three different farmers that are working with Selt, um, to take a look at potentially farming this, this land. So, really, great.
Yeah. And, uh, happy, I don't know if Steve or Rhoda wanna chime in at all, but also happy to answer questions if people have them at this point.
Well, I'm, I'm, at this point, just gonna read a, a note that I think all the select board got as well, from Charlene Anderson. She said, "I will not be attending tonight, so I'm writing in support of the request for $130,000 from the Conservation to apply towards the conservation easement. The particular parcel is rich in agricultural soils and must be protected. It is also the wish of the landowners to see this happen. In addition, Southeast Land Trust, who the landowners are working with, is one of the top land trusts in the state for developing easements on agricultural land for long-term viability. Southeast Land Trust also works to connect beginner farmers to conserved agricultural land. Farmland access is almost impossible for beginner farmers, however, land with easements on them helps with the access challenges. I know this because in my full-time work, I work with farmers and land trusts." Charlene works for the, the Community Loan Fund in Concord. "I would ask you to consider a recommendation to increase the funds beyond the $130,000 request by the Conservation Commission to put towards this project. My recommendation is simple. Given the years of dedication to this town by the Caprons, it would be good to see more put towards the project out of the Conservation Fund." So, I've also had one other conversation with someone who could not make it late tonight that is of the same thoughts that additional funds, um, perhaps matching, from the Conservation Fund, matching, um, what the people would put in instead of having them contribute a higher amount. So, if Rhoda and Steve were amenable to that, if you're opposed to it, then it won't be a high question. What I'd like to propose is that there be another $25,000 put towards this out of the Conservation Fund so that we split, um, the cost of this Conservation Fund.
Fund by me?
Okay, uh, and you, do you second that, Sue?
Aye, was that a, that a?
That's a motion to put an additional $25,000.
That's a second.
Second it. Any further discussion on that amount from the Conservation Commission? Hearing none, all those from the Conservation Commission, uh, wrote in favor of increasing the fund by, uh, increasing the amount given to the Caprons by another $25,000, please show, by, show of hands.
Aye.
One, two, three.
Aye.
Five, anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? So, it's five to nothing to increase the amount, uh, from 130 up to 155,000 out of the Conservation Fund. Uh, at this point, I'll take, uh, any, uh, questions from the Board of Selectmen? Have any?
I read everything you guys wrote. Thank, I want to say, first of all, thank you guys very much for this and letting us have this detailed ahead of time, instead of being at the last bit, you know, it was nice to be able to actually read through it, um, instead of being, coming and asking and trying to figure it out on the spot, you know? So, I understand everything that you guys are trying to do, so, again, thank you for the information ahead of time. It does make it a lot easier for, you know, somebody like me to at least understand what you guys are trying to do, you know, so. Board members have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? This is a public hearing, this is your chance to weigh in on it? Yes?
Uh, I'll just make a comment. I'm Beth Benham, I also live on Stage Road. I live at the bottom of the hill, but Rhoda and Steve have stewarded at the top of the hill for so many years. And, um, as you say, the, uh, my backyard is the North River, and so it's really important to, uh, to my husband and to me that what flows downhill is, um, not something that would harm our backyard, um, and not gonna hurt anything that is downriver from our backyard. We're lucky enough to have bought 26 years ago this property that ended up watering the Mulligan Forest, which we are extremely grateful, um, that the town bought that conservation easement when it did. We've never done this, you could put a game camera right at the end of our driveway and watch constant traffic of bobcats, bears, and deer. That's, that's, uh, what we know for sure, I see their tracks on the, as the road, I can see the mobile 5152, um, which is regular traffic, has been for years, um, of those mammals, and I'm sure more. But it's not just land animals, it's peregrines that from May to November fly back and forth between the wetlands behind where we live and the wetlands behind where the Caprons live, um, twice a day. It's like, I'm in that way, really fun, every day. And, um, I've been out, oh, I've been following our Capron's property and out, um, the hoppy on the field, on the soaps, and the cheese, and seeing tracks of all the critters that live out there, and, uh, it's an amazing and sacred place that I would hate to see, diminished by development, by, uh, use of, uh, chemicals, lots of paving, um, lots more traffic. It's not a great place for a lot of traffic to be turning and entering, um, those who do try to get out of my driveway, or, uh, it's just not a great spot for that. So, lots of reasons, uh, to keep it pristine, and I feel like the Caprons have been a little bit self-effacing in their assessment of their farming over these many years, and they have, um, done a beautiful job of stewarding this property, growing lots of crops, lots of native species, uh, that are so important. There's amazing birds that are very happy to be living in their backyard, and, um, this is the one of the really important things that we should be taking for granted and would be really sad if they don't get. So, I support this whole partnership.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
So, I have a question, if anybody else doesn't, please, if somebody in the audience has one. You talked about promoting farming on this property. Are we limiting to what type of farming can be on this property, or any type of farming? If somebody wants to bring in 30 head of cows to be on the property?
Yep.
It's not out of the?
No, it's not, um, you know, it's, it's not really our job to limit the type of agriculture so long as they're using best management practices, um, and they're not developing the most prime agricultural soils.
Well, you just, whatever, what they're, what they could possibly be doing with the North River behind them.
Correct.
Whatever, if you have a farm and you're running a lot of livestock, there's runoff of the livestock manure.
Yep, yep.
It's not that big a piece of property that you'd ever, like, the large amount of cattle on it.
My question was more just for the fact of having it, you know, when we talk about promoting farming, I think the people at home want a kind of a better understanding of maybe what's going on. This is why I'm just bringing up the question.
Yeah, the best agricultural practices that Jeremy mentioned, I mean, that, you know, that's one, would probably one of the requirements in the easement to say that these are following best agricultural practices.
Yep.
Which are those kind of things you have thought first, you have, you don't have issues with.
So that we put into the easement part?
Yep.
That, that type of language, so that somebody that knows it is, you know, looking to whatever farm on there?
Yep, that, that's correct, yep.
We didn't talk about that, so it's something that's important to know, so that's why I forgot to just bring it up.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm not sure if you saw the draft of the easement, but the easement refers to best management practices with agriculture and, and not, uh, degrading wetlands on site and other, other water resources, so that's, that's built into Selt's conservation easements and something that we take really seriously, so.
And that includes forestry practices.
Absolutely, yep.
There, there is a, there is some forest land between the, the field and the first stream that you come to, and there's a second stream that eventually merges with the first stream and downstream from, from their property and, and then eventually flows into the North River, you know, down, down near the recycling center.
Weird, what's going on there?
Which has, which has its own problems.
Yep, I'll go there.
I'm Gerald Wire, I live on Round Clock Road, and I just want to say, Gerald, I support the, um, responsible stewardship of, of our lands, and as a community, I support the community doing so as well. This in particular, tonight, but in general, just it's so, so valuable, keep our land, all our lands, we, uh, I support.
Okay.
Like, I just, I'm Danielle Rice, and, um, I just wanted to reiterate really with Steph and Gerald, that, uh, I do think our corridor for wildlife is so sacred and it's very special, and, uh, I'm just, I'm just so happy to be able to, um, support this yard. And, um, also, I've had people from Massachusetts come here and just remark at how open this town is with space, and, you know, compared to Massachusetts, it's very stark, and so, um, yeah, I just want to say, I think this is, uh, just something to treasure, these are great, so thank you, um, conservation and, oh, God, I just need, thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Now, would this property, under the warrant article you guys have out there, would this fall under that, or the town wouldn't be responsible for?
Maybe, is, are you talking about monitoring costs, stewardship, that kind of thing?
Correct.
Yep, so, so the budget that we put forward, um, that was included under the initial $130,000, that, uh, requires that Selt do all future monitoring or responsible for stewardship, and, and that those funds are included there, so the Conservation Commission wouldn't be responsible for that.
Yeah, the only way that we'd be responsible is if they, if Selt failed to monitor on a yearly basis, and then it would fall to us to, uh...
And I actually, like, I think it falls to the states.
If, if we cease to exist, yep, and, and what the, the town would get, uh, not to get too much into the legal jargon, but it's called an executory interest, so if Selt as an organization ceased to exist, then you would have the ability, uh, to step forward and take on that easement. If you chose not to, then it would fall to the Attorney General who would find a suitable organization.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Steve?
I just wanted to say that, um, we've been very happy here in Nottingham, we've been here over 40 years, um, but our children, uh, have, show no sign of coming to their senses and coming back to live in New Hampshire, and they're, uh, holding our grandchildren hostage out on the West Coast. So, uh, COVID was very difficult for us, uh, because we used to go out and see our grandchildren regularly, and we spent a long time not doing that, and, um, we, uh, finally realized that we're only really going to dependably see them by moving out there. We wanted to leave the land as well as we could, and, uh, this is a good way to do it, working with Conservation and working with Selt to just make sure that this is as developed as that land gets, and, uh, we hope that we're, uh, can convey it to prospective farmers, but it's not under our control and something that, uh, what we're happy with is the legal protection that the land is gonna have if we can... If we can convey it to a, a farm couple and they can, uh, farm the land, that's the cherry on top. We'd be happy with that. But the major thing we want to do is to give a little gift to Nottingham, a little parting gift, uh, and thanks for the 40-plus years we've lived here.
Um, I would just add that, um, by even, I mean, we hope to find somebody who will farm it, but just by, um, having it conserved, it will always have the ability to be farmed in the future because that field will be there, so.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you've done for the town. All you...
Okay. Any other comments from the audience at all? Hearing none, I, I will close the Conservation Commission portion of this hearing and turn it back to the Select Board to see if they want to vote to release the, now it's 130 plus 25, 155,000 from the Conservation Fund.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for showing up too tonight. It's nice to see this much interest in a piece of property in town for not being a development property and being something to go into conservation. So thank you all for showing up. Uh, as we go to the board, is there any discussion on this?
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion if you guys are all set. You good, Tyler? Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditure of up to $155,000 from the Conservation Fund for the Capron, uh, Conservation Easement.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Could I just make, make a request?
Sure.
That would help the project flow more quickly because we are, we're trying to accommodate, uh, their move out, out west. Um, if you've had a chance to review the Conservation Easement, what I'd like to ask is that you approve the acceptance of the executory interest in that easement, uh, subject to your town attorney's review of the final Conservation Easement deed. That would allow the process to move a little more quickly. That's why I provided it ahead of the meeting. That's okay.
So how do you want us to word that?
Basically, just that the Select Board accepts the executory interest in the Conservation Easement, subject to the town attorney's review of the deed.
I'll make a motion that the board accept the executory interest in the easement pending review from the town attorney.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Okay.
There you go.
Really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I, I have a couple of questions for the, uh, Select Board at this point. Uh, one, I, I, I know there are three, I think there are three warrant articles that deal with the, uh, something to do with the Conservation Fund. I'm curious as to what happens if all three of them pass, uh, who, which, uh, how do you decide what, uh, I, I think there's some conflicts between the, the three of them, so, or at least two of them anyway.
Uh, quick, quick rule of thumb, the first article on the warrant that is adopted will be implemented first. So if, if, uh, if, if an early article achieves something and then a later article is now then made moot, then the, the later one is moot. The, the order in which they appear in the warrant.
Oh, so it...
And, and that always mattered in a live town meeting, I presume, and the, the rules would be the same in SB two.
Okay. I think there was something else I wanted, but I don't remember what it was at this point, but, uh, it can wait. You can, uh, that back, I guess. Okay.
So we're going to close the public hearing for the, uh, Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen. Thank you, guys, all for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Make sure you tell Charlene that I, I replied to her.
I'm sorry?
I replied to Charlene's email. I'll legacy it when I, when you get home.
I don't know. Had a smiley face anyways. Yep. Want to kick him out?
What's that?
No, I thought they took the numbers off what he had for a budget. What, what he, that's how I thought they came about it.
Or, um, but it was... But it was, yeah. But it was... But I...
All right, our next agenda item is our meeting with, uh, the town moderator, Bonnie?
I'm here.
How are you tonight?
Frazzled. My car wouldn't start, wouldn't start, wouldn't start, wouldn't start. It's a miracle I'm here.
Okay. I don't want to say good to know, but...
But then it did.
That's good.
I don't know if it'll take me home, though, but I have a couple...
We'll find you a ride, Bonnie.
Thank you. Raylene said she'd stay. Apparently the Conservation Commission is meeting. She's my neighbor, kind of, so. So we have a short board tonight.
We do. Getting ready for an exciting time of year, huh, Bonnie?
Oh, yeah. My, my, my calendar has picked up. Do you expect me to drive this meeting or are you guys gonna?
Well, to start, I mean, if you...
You want me to start?
If you don't mind.
Okay, so, um, I guess the main, one of the main issues tonight is the venue for, um, the March elections. Apparently, we didn't plan on the school, but for a lot of reasons, those of us who work elections think it should be in the school and the school is amenable. I think Chris knows they have passed a, they've passed a motion at the school board to allow us to use it for the March, is it eighth or ninth, elections pending your, I mean, it's your call, your Selectmen's call. So that was my first item on the agenda. I mean, for all the reasons of social distancing and traffic and so forth, it's, it's a, it's a much better place. Plus, we have learned that when we switch back and forth, we need to send a mailer to every voter, which is, I don't know, Chris says it's not that hard, but I, I know that Dee is not looking favorably upon that chore if it were to fall on her, anyway. So do you have any questions about that or?
I don't have a problem with it.
No, I think, well, I was all for, happy keeping it at school, anyway, so.
Good. I mean, it's, it's...
As long as the school...
It's easier on the voter if it's always at the same place.
What would trigger the mailer again?
Um, changing the venue from the school, which is where we had it last time, back to the town. I think we were not aware of that in the, in past years, but we are now. There's a statute that requires notification of every voter if we change the polling place.
That's fine.
So the school has already made a motion pending your say-so because they met, um, let's see, they met on last Wednesday or Thursday. And they weren't, they weren't meeting again. They, they wanted to get it done as soon as possible just to advise the parents of the kids, giving them as much time as possible to let them know the school would not be open that day because they'd need to close the school for, for voting.
Sounds good.
Perfect.
So do you guys need to make any sort of motion or?
I don't believe so, because...
Or just, just...
We're going status quo of what we've always done.
Okay. Perfect. So, um, what else are we supposed to discuss tonight? The deliberative session, I suppose, um, which we are planning to do as we did last year with two rooms. One room for people who don't wish to wear masks and one room for people who wish to wear masks. With, um, a similar setup, hopefully we will have, um, professional sound people set that up because they do a better job than our people who aren't really audio people. But I, I think Chris has all of that list.
Yeah, it's ready to go. Kevin Smith at the school is really taking a point on that, but the, the setup will be, uh, matching screens and microphones, just like we did last year, both visible to everybody. Um, no outdoor component that you may recall from the summertime meeting last year, that seems unnecessary in the first weekend of February. Um, but other than that, it should look and feel pretty similar to what you did last year. And, uh, the same vendor's ready to go.
Good.
School's ready to go.
All good.
And, and the school is going to be doing the same thing, so I...
In my understanding, their Tuesday night affair will be the same setup as your Saturday morning.
So they're not on the same day this year, which might cost you all a little more, but that's out of my control. Um, other than that, I don't think, I don't think there's a lot. Do, do you all have any questions? Am I missing something, Chris?
I don't think so. They, they will have to you a list of who's presenting and all that next week.
Right, um, Kelly will, Kelly will prepare that for me. I think she always, I always have a packet when I go to the podium.
That's all pretty straightforward.
I have the warrant. They want me to have the original. I don't know if you give it to me. I don't really care. Can be a photocopy. Um, and she usually will give me a list of people who are non-residents, but who are speaking through some kind of expertise that we need. And I usually allow those people and we have a few citizen petitioned articles on the warrant and I like to have the, the petitioners know that somebody has to present it to the body. And Kelly said that she, she knows who the petitioner is in each case and will, so I can call on the appropriate person to make their presentation to the, to the town. Those are the usual things and I'm, I'm hoping and assuming the town attorney will be present?
Yes.
Good. Um, the only other issue, you know, that came up in training was more for the school than the town, that, 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 the school, the attorney for the Association of School Boards had a kind of a unusual presentation about, um, safety and apparently some school boards are being harassed. He, he's never mentioned it before in the tenures I've been moderator, but I've already met with our people about it, police department. I think Chris was there and, and Dale and Dee, so we're all on the same page about that if should we have any kind of disruption, which I don't really anticipate.
Even the boards getting hassled at the deliberations, huh?
Right. But any, I think, I'm not necessarily sure it's the deliberations because they're pretty much in the same timeframe everywhere in the state.
Right, so...
So that, that timeframe is set by the legislature within, between, I think it's January 30th this year and February, like, 12th, all the deliberatives have to take place. And then the town meetings, um, so that's the SB two, anyway, and I think that just board meetings in general might have had around the state, some people are having problems with groups that are coming in disrupting, which is, um, you know, I'm, I, I usually try to go out of my way to let everybody speak, um, but if people get, um, really disruptive, it's, it's against the law. And as moderator, you have to try to keep, um, keep the attendant body civil, you know, we, we need to speak to each other in a civil way. And if that should, if that should not happen, then there is a method for bringing in the local police, which I had never had any formal training in before, but now that was covered in this year's, um, in this year's training, moderator training. We know, as, I'm sure you all know, we have a new Secretary of State in Dave Scanlon. Bill Gardner is gone. We also have a brand-new, uh, person in the Attorney General's office that we deal with. So we have, we have new people on both of those issues. I mean, Dave, Dave used to be in charge of the elections, really. If you had an issue, you went to him as a town officer. And, uh, we had Nick Chong Yan for two or three years as a Attorney General in the elections office and he was terrific. He always, always got back to me, which I can't say for previous attorneys general. This, this one, I've spoken to once. He sounds like a nice person, so I'm sure everything will be, will go along as smoothly as possible. So...
I, I can't think of any questions or anything, Bonnie.
Guys, you used to grill me. What's wrong with the Select Board now?
I think we're getting all used to it. And as you, and all the years you've been doing it, you've, uh, pretty much helped craft your, uh, what's going on, so.
Well, let me just say that I sent you all, I forwarded you, forwarded all of you the article on the dairy forensic audit, which I, of course, found really interesting.
Wyndham, right?
Yeah, Wyndham. I called it dairy.
That was, that was interesting reading.
That was a very harsh letter, I thought, for the state to send out. I was really kind of surprised.
Yeah.
Um, and also that, um, the state, I, I actually had been talking with Dave Scanlon last week and he asked me what I, what I thought we needed as election people. And I said, "Training, training, we always need training." And he said, "Oh, that is in the works." And then very shortly, we got that invitation, which I wanted to point, point out to you guys because a lot of the times at the end of the day of an election, when we're all wiped out, because we've been there since 6:30, all of us, we're doing the very important work of the numbers, the, the counts, you know, everything that has to be reconciled, the number of voters who've checked in, the number of voters who checked out, the number of ballots cast and all of that stuff. I often get asked by Selectmen, you know, what can I do? What can I do to help? Um, which is very kind of you, but I think at that point, it's not the right time to train you because I'm very busy, the town clerk is very busy, Deanna's very busy working on these numbers. And if we stop to train you, we'd be there even longer. So I would just encourage any of you to partake of the trainings where they've selected Selectmen to participate and I'm sure they'll be teaching. You know, some of you come to Dee's trainings, which is great, um, but she doesn't go over what the officers are doing. She goes over what the ballot clerks are doing and the volunteers. And so it doesn't really cover how we reconcile at the end of the night, which is an important thing for you all to know, probably, even though, um, actually, we, we all sign those stickers that are on the ballots, on the ballot boxes. So if any of you have time to take in any of those webinars, I think it would be good, good time spent, just, you know, in the few days before an election. Anyway, that's the end of my spiel. You guys done?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you so much.
See ya.
Thanks for all your support. See you, um, is it next week?
Yeah, a week from Saturday, right?
It's in a few days. Is it, is it the eighth or the fifth?
Yeah, week from Saturday.
So we're ahead of the school? No?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, a week from Saturday. I better get reviewing. Just kidding.
Good night, Bonnie.
Good night. Just going to go to the Conservation Commission. Well, first I'll check my car and see if it works.
Good luck with that.
So how do we open this up for the chief?
Invite him down to talk.
We will invite up, uh, our fire chief. Jay, if you want to come up?
Have a seat here, please.
Hey, Bill Chuck, Fire Chief. How are you folks? Thank you for giving me the time this evening to talk to you. I'd like to have a discussion with the board about some questions, comments, and maybe we could have a discussion here. Before I kick it off, I'd like to introduce our chaplain Mary Anderson. Maybe you could say a couple of words to the board regarding the fire department.
Appreciate your time. Mr. Chairman, just would ask to, for maybe a minute, I'm gonna go from the angle of how we used to have representatives for the boards, and I'm going back to a number of years when I was on the board. So I'm kind of would like to share some of the things that I've had the ability to see, and it's been about seven years or so. Consider a department member, but also chaplain. So one of my, my key jobs is really to encourage employees and to just back them up in any way I can, including the chief. And, and yeah, everybody that's members. I've also been really blessed with the ability to have a radio more recently, and so I actually can get a feel for how many calls are going on, when they're happening, who's going out, things like that. I occasionally go out and help, but mainly I'm not a firefighter or EMT. So, you know, it's more when I'm needed on that basis. So in mentioning that, one of the things that I noticed early on, as being part of the, a member, a department member, was that there were many, especially full-time folks coming in, getting trained, getting gear, getting set up, and they wouldn't be with us very long, and some of them really experienced very deep, most of them very dedicated to what they do, and but it seemed like many of them I would see without not very much time, sometimes as little as three or four months, they were off to another department. And I, I didn't get it at first. I was trying to figure out why this was happening. Now I understand, and it has a lot to do, not so much with hourly pay, but really the, the schedule. Because in other towns, firefighters, EMTs can have a schedule that's, you know, allows them to to work something like two days on, two days off. Kind of I don't know those details exactly, but what it does, it gives them more flexibility in their life. We haven't had that ability to really do that here. So I wanted to just mention I really am excited to see that the chief has brought a proposal to to bring on full-time members, because I think that's actually resolving this problem that I've seen for some time now, and I just couldn't put my finger on what was going on. And so now I'm seeing that. And last thing I wanted to mention is currently we have two full-time EMT firefighters that are working over 60 hours a week on the average. So they're being paid by a town in Nottingham, time and a half for that extra time. If you calculated it, really that extra time would would be enough to pay for one and a half more people. So just wanted to kind of share what, some of the things I've seen. Not, and the last thing is the also in about seven years that I've been involved, the call volume has just constantly increased and it's been more difficult, from what I see anyway, to to keep members or to really cover those calls. Wanted to just explain that I think that's why the chief has presented the full-time people that he's doing in the budget.
Thank you, Gary. If I may, I just I'm not a marketer, but I do, I do support and believe truly in Nottingham Fire Rescue. I want to say again for, for the board and for the people at home, your fire and rescue department operated 24/7, 365, non-stop. No shutdowns, no days off during this pandemic time. Okay, that should be realized. Other businesses shut down, other town offices, town operations had shut down. We covered the town faithfully and during this pandemic time. If you compare our budgets with local budgets in other towns, you'll see that I think we do provide value to this town. Okay? I just got some bullets I'd like to discuss. I'd also want to get out, because I'm starting to hear about Article 14 and Article 5 on the warrant, how they relate. Article 14 is a new ambulance. I just want to make it clear that the new ambulance is independent of Article 5, and both are exclusive. Okay, they're not dependent on each other. They have different risks associated with them that we're trying to address. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that a second ambulance is not exclusive to to adding to our full-time complement. I've got a question regarding full-time employees in the town. Is there a policy going to be drafted that says if the town hires more than one full-time employee, it's got to be covered on a warrant article, because you know, this requirement showed up for, for the fire department's three people, and I just want to know if it's going to be a standard that's going to be applied across the board? Or is it, is this a one-time? You know, is there a limit to the number of people you hire at once without going on an article?
I don't believe so, Chris. I have no answer for that. I don't know.
What goes on a warrant article?
This is just a big expansion to the fire department. It's the reason why I think it's a warrant article. I think if you were hiring one employee, I don't think it'd be, I don't think it'd be the same situation as you're in when you're hiring three and the budget changes.
No, I think the reason that you're in, you're in, this looks differently now because two things, the size of the increase and the, and the existence of the SB two structure. Those are the two things that changed that that really changed the approval process and the how you would go about budgeting and spending money across fiscal years and things like that. So we can get into the weeds on that, but that's really what's different now is SB two.
Okay, and similarly, the loaded figures for new employees, is that going to be a standard at the town? Are we going to talk about loaded being the full benefit package portion for new employees, or is it only going to be the salary portion that gets the headline here?
Well, we always fact everything when we're looking at a new employee. We're looking at all.
But all that reflects in the, in the, in the department's operating budget right now is the salary aspect of it, so there's that, that the area of benefits.
It's a covenant on other lines of the budget.
Correct, I understand that, I do, but I didn't know if, you know, if, if that's going to be, it seemed, well. Okay. I want to, I want to address the, the one versus three full-time employees, Mr. Chair. Other, other departments, and I just want to, want to provide some information. They're not subject to the same state law requirements as, as emergency services. The state mandates that there are two licensed providers, so, you know, the discussion about one versus three, trying to make it work. We have to have, we have to have two licenses on it for the ambulance to, to transport. So that's part of that, okay? One license doesn't solve that problem. And again, I thank you for the time, and demographics, both with the town and the department, you know, an increase in residential development, the commercial development that's planned for Route Four, the industrial development that's potentially going to happen on Route Four, it's all going to impact the town and the department. I just want to bring that back up again. Our discussions during the budget process, if I may make an observation, and maybe this year was a little unique. I'd asked that the board in the future budget process pay more attention to what the actual expenditures are and make the decisions based on what the year-end totals are, or as live of data as possible. Because some of the data, I really, I trust that is not the latest and the most accurate for those decisions.
Sometimes, you know, I mean, again, not to, I understand where you're going, I told you, but but we're asked to make a decision or asked to put there without having that due to time constraints.
And may I offer that?
And it's, I mean, we, the more information we can be provided, we all be happy to take as much information as we can, but sometimes we are limited to what we have, and we still are put into a situation where we have to make a decision. And is it right? No, and, and again, I understand where you're coming from, our previous meetings, and I'm with you 100% of what you said.
And you were the one that brought that to our attention too, when you came in, and said, "No, I already spent this much," so that's why we changed what we did.
Yeah, I'd offered it maybe, you know, more direct communication with the department head might be worth it, okay? There's a COLA, 4% COLA, is that correct? That's, is that correct? Is that, is that being applied only to full-time personnel? Does it apply to part-time, per diem, call stipend, that sort of stuff?
Was it part-time as well, Chris, if I remember correctly, or was it just full-time?
What was calculated before I disappeared was the was full and part-time.
So does that apply to per diem people, part-time being per diem people in our, our?
Well, there's that's up to the board. Generally, I would think yes. I think it's probably their intention. I wasn't party to conversations about that, but that's the, that was the intention in the original proposal. If you start shuffling, if you start restructuring things and, you know, there's entirely different classifications of employees, then we'd have to have a different conversation, but I think that was the intention coming in was, it was more or less across the board.
With your permission, I'd like to talk about Article 5 of the warrant article. The first question is, was there a DRA decision on the wording regarding simple majority vice two-thirds majority required for that warrant article as it's written?
No, DRA had no concerns with the language on that element.
Okay, thank you. I got a, I got a question that you may, I'm trying to understand the genesis of this article, because who drafted it, how was it drafted, the wording of it, the dollar amounts, and I'm going to get into the dollar amounts. I didn't know. Was it, did the board draft that article, or was it?
So we had input from Chris on the, on the language and the structure of it. So I'm just separating the, the dollar number from the structure of the language of the warrant article. We got that from you.
You got it from your attorney.
Yes.
So are you asking about the?
The way it's worded in there is, I'll give you my opinion. It's totally confusing. The dollar amounts aren't I don't know where the dollar amounts comes from. That's where I gave you that handout, and I'm willing to, I'd like to, like to discuss those dollar amounts.
Can you walk us through your handout?
Absolutely. But I'm, the board, was there a member of the board that drafted it, or was it, was it drafted during a meeting, or?
So we followed the same process, for the most part, that we do every year. And that, that is that Chris usually drafts them and brings them to us.
With, with input from the department head, I think, okay, that's, that's.
From the attorney.
And for what? You listed on your line items, that's your budget?
Okay, but also input, input from a department head. The wording, the wording in that article is
So, so we're, we're comfortable with the wording of the article, at least I am. I don't know if you guys are, but based on the feedback from the lawyer, I'm comfortable with the structure and wording of it. If you want to talk about the number, let's talk about that as a separate.
I, I, okay, and that was the board's decision that I'll talk about the numbers, and the numbers came from Chris, or I'm trying to, where did, where did the dollar amounts come from, because I don't know who to, did?
So I will say that I don't think that communication was as crisp as it could have been given different circumstances this year. I think what happened, and I wasn't in the session sitting down in the detail of it, but I think what happened was there was an extrapolation of the numbers from the operating budget, and they were moved over more or less into the warrant article.
The board, the board did this, or where did those numbers? Who did the extrapolation?
Well, I think that's where we gave the information came from, was we said, "This is the information you have," and that's how the numbers were put in.
Okay, I'd be interested to see that rationale, what, I'm going to, I'm going to go into why I don't think that rationale is accurate, okay? All right. I'm going to, I'm going to say something. I don't think Article 5 does us any favors, okay? The way it's worded, because it's confusing to me, and I'm supposed to be the champion of that article. I don't understand if I read it, and if I read it the first time, and I don't, I don't understand.
So Jay, at this point, we can't change the wording of the article?
Uh, can you do it at?
You can do it at deliberative.
Correct.
Yes.
So that, that leads to another question, is that this is the article that's going to be published in the town report, the way it's worded there?
Yes.
Well, if it gets changed in deliberative session.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
If we could change, we have deliberative session, and we go in this article, and we start speaking about this article, and we make changes at that. Those changes made at the deliberative session are what's going to reflect when the guy, people go to vote, and what's going to reflect in the town's
Ballot.
Town's, yeah, the ballot and the town book and everything like that.
Well, the book comes out first, doesn't it?
Well, it'll go in, well, it should go into the book the way we changed that deliberative session.
I think the deadline for the printed annual report is after the deliberative session, so I think we'll capture those.
That's, that's encouraging, good, because my, my observation, if people read, read what's in here for the first time, it, it doesn't accurately describe. It doesn't say the number of personnel, that's one, and I don't want to go nitpicking at this point, you guys approved it, but I got, I got concerns on the way it's worded.
Well, we will be able to nitpick it at the deliberative session, and that's, that's the point of that, to do that at that point, so.
All right, I'll be, I'll go into the details if we can answer those questions right there. Okay. Okay, I handed out a spreadsheet here, and I was going to draw it on the board, but I, I think it's important that we look at the cost, the total cost of this expansion to a 24/7, six-day-a-week full-time structure for Nottingham Fire. It's important that we, we look at it from all the salary lines, okay, and that's what I try to convey here. The first, first two columns on the first sheet show the 2022 version with three full-time equivalents is what we currently have room for. It shows the salary lines for the full-time, the overtime, the part-time, the stipend for the call members, and the chief's salary, okay? It shows a total, not loaded, of $278.6,000. Okay? If you go and you use the 30K per full-time equivalent. If you go and you use the 30K per full-time equivalent average, and I, I need to head nod that that's an accurate number, 30K per firefighter, firefighter and police seem to be higher in their, in their 30K, is that a?
For New Hampshire retirement?
Retirement insurance.
New Hampshire retirement's just barely under 33% of gross wages, and insurance is, uh, it, it depends on if it's a family and individual, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a fluid number. I don't, I wouldn't want to put a, well, I can get you a, a good guess, but I can't, I can't head nod 30,000 off the top of my head. You and I did that, did one the other day.
The other day, correct.
If that's what it was, that's what it was.
Okay.
I, I don't remember.
That's the number we have to come, you know, we have to come up with, what is that, what is that, what's that number going to be for this estimate, okay? Because that's, that's the, that's the loaded component of the salary here. And if we're going to, if we're going to publish, let me ask you, is Article 5, is that reflecting the loaded, loaded salary amounts, or is that reflecting the?
So my assumption is, is that if it came out of the operating budget, that it reflected everything? Because remember the calculations in the spreadsheet that were all linked to the numbers, and the calculations were automatic?
Right.
So I'm guessing that's what it was done.
So I'm guessing the same thing.
That they are loaded? Okay.
Yeah.
All righty. So if I, if I put a, a 30K per full-time equivalent, and again, that's somewhere we got to make that assumption in here, that that, that represents what the benefits cost for a full-time employee is, I come up to 368.6K for the total salary lines in the 2022 budget. If I take the delta, you take the difference between those two, okay? Do you see what the difference is between, oh, it comes out to 90K. So we move on to 2022 with three full-time equivalents for 12 months, and three additional full-time personnel for four months out of, out of the year, and I come up with a total of, of 305.
What's the incremental, though, Jay?
What do you mean?
What, so you've given us the numbers for 2022.
Yep.
Loaded and unloaded.
Yep.
And then you're showing us total, but what's the incremental for the three additional?
I, I don't understand the question incremental. You're saying the delta between them?
Well, you've got three.
Or the timeframe?
Right? And now you're giving us a number that shows six.
Yes.
But what, what are those two numbers separate? What's just the three additionals for 2022, for the third of the year that they, they would be here?
Okay. Salary-wise?
Everything.
Okay.
Because that's, in my mind, you guys disagree, but in my mind, that's how we get at whether or not we have the right numbers in warrant article number five.
I'm doing it by summation. I think we come to the same, we come to the same by doing the summations. If we go between page one and two, okay, I'm showing that there's a, a delta by adding the three full-time for 1/3 of the year, I'm showing a delta of 56.
So can I ask you a question?
$56.9,000.
Okay, so wording aside.
Yeah.
You don't like warrant article number five because of the dollar amounts that are in there.
And it doesn't specifically say three personnel.
Okay, so when you say three personnel, you lock yourself into three personnel.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you can make that change on the floor at deliberative session, but just be aware of the implications of what you're doing.
Yeah.
Dollar amounts, what do you think the dollar amounts should be in here?
Okay, I'm, I'm saying for the first year, the delta for salary should be 56.9K, not 100.8 for the current.
For salary, but that's not loaded.
That is, that is loaded.
56 for three people for a third of a year?
Yes, for a third of the year, correct.
That can't be right.
Okay.
So you're going to hire three people, they're going to work for four months, and you're only going to put out 50, pay $56,000?
Yeah.
In salary and benefits?
Correct. And that's, that's the first column, that shows the first column on page two. I'm showing the delta is 50, 50.5K for salary, and I'm showing a delta of, of 30K for benefits.
But if you've got.
At the same, at the same time, excuse me.
He's, he's reducing other lines.
Yes.
Part-time. He's, he's increasing one line and decreasing another. So I, I'm not chasing your math, but that's the methodology where you, if you, if you increase your full-time, then you decrease your part-time.
Okay.
And I think that's where you're probably not seeing intuitively what his numbers are doing. Does that make sense, Jay?
That's exactly right, where I'm saying.
And that probably has not been part of your discussion, is there's offsetting savings in payroll lines that are not, they don't jump out at you if you aren't, if they aren't called out, and that's.
Yeah.
Thank you, you're exact, you're exactly right. If you see the part-time salary from 2022 to 2023, it goes from 78.6 to 55 in 2022 with three people.
And we, they're labeled as part-time?
Yep.
55K?
Correct.
I mean, but the other one, the full-time, so we have three full-time firefighters now?
We have three, equivalent, three slots for them, correct.
Okay.
Yes. That's why, that's why I started out saying we have to look at the entire salary lines, because if you go further into the 2023, in the 2023 total salary lines, you'll see that, that 55 is carried, carried forward, but also the stipend line is being reduced by 10K with the thought that there will be less, we're going to, we're going to change to an hourly compensation for our call people. It's not going to be a point system anymore. So there's another 10K that's, that's reduced from one of the other salary lines by going with six.
So you think the current year should be 56, and then what do you think 2023 should be?
Loaded, 212.
That's okay.
212K.
212 with the, the three new ones?
For a six total in 2023.
Six total, okay.
Yep. So that would be that, that first number, that 302.5, I, I don't see that 302.
So these three personnel, when we start the year of 2023, it's going to estimate the increase in the budget of $212,000. And the increase in the budget next year, what you're looking for is 56.9 to represent the four months that you're going to have the three full-time employees.
Yes, sir. That's, that's the, that's the ragtime math I used, okay? And again, I go back to, you need to look at all the salary lines together. I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, I, I don't know where these numbers come from, I don't know the rationale between the 302 and 108. So, you know, therefore, therefore, that, you know, the tax impact, obviously, for the people at home watching is a little, little different, okay? I, I extrapolated, I come up to like, on a $400,000 home, it's $96 in difference, and I don't know, you people do that better than I do.
So, I mean, we can't change it here, right? It, it is what it is. So the only place it can get changed is on the deliberative, at the deliberative session.
Now, we make a motion to change these numbers to the current numbers, and the chief's asking it 212 and 56.9.
We can, or the chief can, we'll have to talk about that.
I think it would be more effective if the board did it, because, okay, but I'm just, that's my comment.
No.
It's unfortunate that, that the one that was written and voted on at the Budget Committee was, I, I, I don't know, I don't know where it came from, but.
Still might not have changed those votes.
And, and that's, I just want to be clear, and I want to, I want to be able, okay, sir, as, you know, as the head of the department, and I'd say it again, the champion for that warrant article, I want to be able to, I want to be able to defend those numbers, that's all, okay?
So I made notes here for the, obviously, for deliberative session.
Well, I want to wrap my head around the numbers a little bit more.
No, yeah, I mean, again.
But I appreciate this breakout.
Okay. I, you know, if, if, I'm open to, I'd like to understand the other numbers if you want to, but I want to understand the numbers that are in there. If they're, if they're the numbers that you come up with, I'd like to understand what the, how that, how that works.
We can get an answer for that, can't we?
I think so, yes. Like I said, I wasn't, I wasn't here, I don't know, I don't know where the, the sausage was being made, and I don't know where, I don't know what, I don't know what went in and what came out. But I, I would think that between now and, and your meeting next Monday, we could get to a number that we could all explain.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a lot of faith in the number that's written in the warrant right now. I don't, I can't see where it came from, and I can't. So I, I think between the chief and whoever else amongst you was involved and I, we, I think we can get to a number that makes sense. I think it's important we understand that the warrant article is doing a couple of things. It's, first and foremost, it's authorizing extra money for the year we're in right now. That's the second number, the, the smaller number, the 2022 number. That is a, that's a, that's a really important number, because we're going to hopefully go, if it's approved, we're going to go hire people and spend the money, and we got to have the right number there. The other number, the 2023 number, is not approval to spend the money. It's, it's a, it's a factor in the voter's mind, which is what the chief is thinking about, in terms of how a voter makes a decision about this. But the purpose of putting that other number, that bigger number for 2023 in there, really is only to allow you to include that amount in the default budget next year, so that you're not having to backtrack in the event of a default budget. That's the only thing that, and it matters a lot to a voter that's trying to make a decision, and, and the chief who's trying to explain what he's doing and how much it's going to cost. In legal terms, it's all about what is, what shows up in the default budget.
Yeah.
The budget's going to have to get approved next year, you know, it's going to have to stand on its own and get approved, but the, but this is moving the default budget up or down in that first, that first clause of this warrant article, that's all that's doing. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. But it is, it, it's obviously important when you try to explain what you're doing, and that's where the chief's coming from.
Chair, I stand relieved.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. Greatly appreciated.
Very good.
Welcome back, Chris, nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay. Seeing we actually just went through our whole agenda.
We do have non-public.
Yep, I know, we got there.
Yeah.
I have A and E for you in non-public.
And that's it then, right? What, A, and you said A and E?
E, yeah.
Yeah. You ready for a motion on it?
Yep.
I'll make a motion, we go into non-public per RSA 91, dash, A, colon, 3, 2, A and E.
Second.
Roll call.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Good night in Nottingham. Once we're finished our non-public session, we'll be automatically ending the meeting for tonight.